The property. Because you're kind of trying to flip this around here just to them. Obviously, it's only used to them.
Yeah.
They built their house on top of it.
In this situation, I heard two questions, Councilmember Swatman. Is it adequate? And your second question is, is there some payment involved or some bidding involved? Okay, so the first question is, yes, it's adequate. And the reason why I believe it's adequate is every time I drive by that pond, it's weed-eated, cleaned up. Our guys are able to go in there and do the work to maintain it. And I've never heard any complaints from Assistant Superintendent Steve Proctor, whose guys are the ones managing that. And I'm confident that he would tell me if there was. Second thing is, there's no exchange of money that I'm recommending because they made us whole and in-kind. So...
Well, that 10-foot utility easement is quite a bit of property, though, right?
Well, and Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Swatman, the reason it didn't go through the normal request for bids is because it's an encumbrance on a property owned by an individual. So we couldn't sell that encumbrance to any other entity because it's only for the limited purpose of providing access to our stormwater pond. So when we're releasing easements, we're releasing our encumbrance on private property to return their private property back to a whole. So it's not like when we would sell the reed property, which we're selling in fee. So we're selling the entire ownership rights. Here, we're just releasing our limited interest in the encumbrance, which would be the limited access. So that's why it didn't go through the whole, "give us your bid" type scenario.
You said the city attorney wants to speak for a second? Can we go to that real quick?
Thank you. And just for the record, Charlotte Archer is sitting in for Jennifer Robertson today. I believe the last staff member who spoke said exactly what I was about to say. But just to add to the council member, there's a distinction between when we surplus real property and we sell it to, in an auction. This is an actual vacation of a vested property right, and it will divest to the underlying fee owners automatically. And then staff makes a recommendation with regards to the cost, which staff has just articulated. So if there's any other questions, I'm happy to speak to those as well.
Great, thank you. Did you want to have anything else there? Okay, Councilmember McLehman's?
Is there an easement for that gravel approach off of the main road? Whose property is that? I mean, is it possible that it changes hands and somebody decides they're going to put an oak tree right there?
So the question was, is there an easement for the approach that got replaced in kind? And no, because it butts right up to our right-of-way on Sky Island Drive.
Okay.
So you go from right-of-way to the pond property.
Perfect.
I have a question.
Councilmember Fullerton?
Thank you. So doesn't this in kind of basically release the property and kind of gives the property back to the people because we're not using it, so we're just releasing our claim? Kind of is like it's giving back property rights?
The question I heard is that, are we releasing the property back to the property owner? Yes.
Well, just an easement in this particular case is where I was differentiating. It's not like an actual whole, you know, use of a property. It's an easement, is my understanding.
Correct, yeah. I misspoke, yeah. It's, Councilmember Swatman was right. There's no exchange of property. It's just, we have the right to use it, right? We never ever owned it.
Yeah. It's not going to be an easement anymore, basically.
Correct.
Easements can be a restriction, like if you say, oh, we have an easement on that property, so you can't do anything with your, with your property with that portion. So now, by releasing that easement, then if, I don't know if they want to put a sidewalk there or whatever, then they can do whatever they want, even, it's probably too small to do anything, but it's kind of releasing property rights, the way I look at it. It's giving them permission to do whatever they want.
Yeah, obviously.
They ignored it.
They already did.
Further questions? So, question. I do have to open and close? Okay, all right. I will now open the public hearing. This is your time to address the council on the item under "public hearing only." You have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record when called upon. Okay? We don't have anybody. I will now close the public hearing. We will now have review of council minutes. Councilmember Fullerton, Councilmember Hubler.
I did not see anything.
I did not see any changes. Jinx.
Thank you. Now onto council open discussion. I do have one thing to bring up here, just a second. There's two amazing happenings on this Saturday. The first being our annual Christmas tree lighting, featuring the Bonnie Lake High School choir with cookies and cocoa from the Bonnie Lake Kiwanis, as well as a visit from Santa Claus. And at the same time, there's the Sumner High School Spartans will be competing for the state title at Husky Stadium. Both events start at 7:00 PM. So lots... I think the Husky Stadium may draw more, but...
That's here at the fire station, right?
Do they have cookies?
Correct, it'll be here at the fire station. What's that?
But do they have cookies?
See, they don't.
Yeah, right.
They don't.
We're doing what we can to try and draw them back in.
It's also probably, it's also the Santa parade for Sumner Puyallup.
Oh, yeah, okay.
As well as Saturday, so I know that took a lot of people from us last year.
Lot going on.
Come on up here.
Is that at 7:00 also?
I think the Puyallup one is somewhere like that. It's, it's a dark, it's nighttime one, so it's all lights and everything, so...
Any other discussion from council? Are you raising your hand? Okay, Deputy Mayor Swatman?
Thank you. We're trying to look at getting the council together next year, early on, to try to do kind of a work plan thing or something like that, you know, try probably a whole day kind of thing, or half a day type of thing. And thinking about if we can use one of the Tuesdays, but I didn't know, I know Councilmember Baldwin would be the one so far with the most conflicting schedules for daytime type of activities.
That would be me and Davis.
Yeah, I checked with Councilmember Davis, and he was okay with like, you know, I was trying to think of the second Tuesday, or the second workshop, you know, using that kind of an extended workshop format. But I didn't, you know, without checking with Councilmember Baldwin's availability, whether that was practical or not.
Are you talking about in the evening or in the daytime?
We don't know how long, we were thinking it's probably going to be four or five hours or something like that, you know, getting staff updates and project plans, whatever the council wants to do, kind of setting up the year, you know, what the council expectation is for the year, work plan.
So Davis said he's going to take a day off from school.
I think that's what his, I didn't, you know, I chatted with him a little bit, but he was a little sick, so maybe he didn't realize what he was doing. Is that, but you know, from your perspective, I don't know if there's any days that, you know, I was trying to like, as opposed to doing some kind of a Saturday thing where we destroy the staff's availability and everything, whether it's practical, it's just kind of thrown out, it's an early-on idea. I don't know if you're always working every day. She's like, oh, yeah.
I do, yeah. Every day the kids are in school. Every day they're in school. I can certainly see if there, are you thinking in January, maybe there's an upcoming date that I'm off?
Yeah, maybe.
Which is not likely, but...
Well, let me know then, right?
Okay.
I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are, because I know I can take a day off, and I don't know what Councilmember McLehman's availability usually looks like on...
I'm good.
Are we talking about having it somewhere outside of the city property? Or are we going to bring in some food or something?
Yeah, exactly, right, yeah. It depends on how, if it's a lunch, lunch to early, late afternoon thing, right? We could do a lunch thing or whatever you think, you know? Yeah, go ahead.
I guess just for the record, I do have January 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 6th, and 20th off.
1st, 2nd, 3rd, and what?
6th and the 20th off.
I'm okay.
20th, you're close.
Staffs will be ready at the beginning of January, I'm sure, because they're going to be off for the holiday.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So it would have to be near the end of the month, I would think, so that they can get their stuff together.
Yep, definitely. So we'll have to think about it a little bit.
You said maybe that, like, the 21st, you said like the 2nd?
That could be a possibility, but Councilmember Baldwin has a conflict with that date so far. We'll have to, you know, we'll put it out there.
On the 27th and 28th of January, I could potentially get out of some professional development that I also am scheduled to do.
Is that a good thing or bad?
I mean, it's, it's just hard to get a substitute for a science class.
Sure, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll put a calendar idea together and put a little poll out there and see what we can do.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? All right, not seeing anything. We'll move on to our discussion items. Madam Clerk?
This is AB 24103, ordinance D 24103, for discussion only on adopting the biennial budget for calendar years 2025 and 2026, providing perseverance and corrections and establishing an effective date.
I'm guessing Ms. Ryerson would like to speak to that?
I don't have anything to say.
You don't have anything?
No, I think I've said everything. So if there's questions, I'm willing to take questions.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Hubler?
Just because I don't, I read through when you sent the last piece, and then tonight I don't see it, so I'm not sure what I saw, but I wanted to check. And what I had seen is it looked like that when we do the Angeline Roundabout, that sidewalks would be a separate budget item from the Angeline Roundabout. Was that what I saw, or were they together in the same? Because I thought when you, when it was presented to us, it was Angeline Roundabout and the sidewalks to, up to Locust were, from the Target Light to Locust, was all part of that cost, but I don't...
Jason, I have it open.
If I saw it wrong or what? I just want to make sure what I'm...
Yeah, I think it just says Angeline Roundabout in the, in the project list for the street CIP. But yes, that's the, the Roundabout project is the Roundabout, and then the sidewalk from Angeline Road are just past that, where it will tie into the Fennel Creek Trail all the way back to Locust. That's what we got the, the grant from PSRC for, so that's four. So that's what is considered one project. It's just the Angeline Road Roundabout project, and that's the scope of it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, yeah, it wasn't spelled out differently or separated.
Okay.
Councilmember McLehman's?
So I did have two questions. One is, it's my understanding that there is no additional full-time employee that's been authorized in the budget. Is that correct?
Correct. What you're talking about, so Councilmember McLehman's reached out to me asking about a position in the budget. This was something that came to council, I believe. Councilmember Fullerton, and I actually talked about this almost a year ago now. It came to council right about October, November of last year, and I can certainly send out those documents again. But basically, it was an exchange of a position no longer needed for a position that they did need. So there was no additional, but you're seeing some differences in how I'm reporting it. But there are no additional FTEs in this.
And then I have one other follow-up question, which was on the, which was on the, the, the smaller vehicle for the, was the wheel loader? Was that, did we see that and I missed it, or has that been added?
No, it was not added. That did go out in the preliminary budget, the ERNR list. And yes, that is new. And I think Jason did a pretty good job of summing up what that's for. I'll let him say it. I'll mess it up.
When we entered into the development agreement with PG 410, they're building us a new decant facility because our old decant facility over at Allen York Park, well, it can't be there because it violates our RSEU agreement and really isn't a decant facility. It's what we've kind of cobbled together over the years and doesn't meet current regulations, would need a lot of upgrading. So we're building, we're having someone build us a new decant facility. As part of that, it has a sump area where people can drop some materials into, so we need a smaller loader that can get down in there and scrape up that material and put it in the dump trucks to cart it away after it's been decanted or basically the water has drained out. And it's, it's not a general funded activity. It's really paid for by the water, stormwater, and sewer utilities because they're the ones that use the, the decant facility. Because even water, when we have to do hydro excavation around water meters, that soil that we collect has to be decanted to separate the water from the dirt.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin, did you have a question?
I did. Remind me again, kind of what exactly is entailing the key card access situation again?
So the key card access did not include the Public Services Center. It includes two doors here and the elevator.
Okay, and what was the cost of that again?
Let's look here.
I know we had a very lengthy discussion, so I just, I want to make sure that it's...
$28,000. That's what's in the budget. Hold on.
And I think the original was like 48 or 50,000.
Yeah, I want to say I think it's $27,000, is what I'm recalling. I don't have the detail here.
On the budget, it says $28,000.
Okay.
Your mind is very good.
Pretty close.
What page are you on?
Page 43.
Are you done? Councilmember McLehman's?
So I'd just like to congratulate the mayor and Sherri. This is amazing, good work. It's a challenging time, and the staff, thank you, because I know that there's going to be concessions and you're going to work. Maybe everybody is going to do, I get this at work all the time, we're going to do more with less, right? Everybody hears that, and they're like, ah! But in the truth, you guys really have done that, and, and it makes a big difference to people, right? They will, they'll be much happier.
You've done an amazing job.
Yeah, you should have put this in like a little wrapping paper with a bow. You could have put it under the tree with the cookies. Here is a balanced budget.
The mayor and I talked last Tuesday, and I said, you know, permission to talk to the deputy mayor? He says, yes, call ahead. Called him, walked into Hibbert's office with a grin just this big, and he goes, "Why do you look like you won the lottery?" And I go, "I feel like I won the lottery." So, yes, so we, we feel like it's a pretty good bow, so...
Yeah, definitely. Any further discussion? Okay. Is this good to go, yep, is this good to go on consent? Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk?
This is AB 24116, motion M 24116, for discussion only on directing staff to include the December 2024 version of the pedestrian prioritization index in the final version of the comprehensive plan and to utilize it to prioritize proposed sidewalk improvements throughout the city.
All right, Mr. Sullivan?
So this, this is one of those ones where there's more council participation and less Jason talking. So we, we, every year, and this came up at CDC, do pedestrian improvement projects, and we try to have a way of prioritizing those projects based on a number of factors. And those factors are on page 53 of your packet. And we have what we call, we have a point value that we have assigned to that and that we presented in the planning commission, and they have also put their kind of approval on that base point system. In order to make sure that we're getting council priorities and where the council feels that the weighting should go, we always have about 25 weighting points that we assign to the principal category. So the public road classification, ADA Act compliance, existing crashes, parks and trailheads, local centers, public services and facilities, whether it fills a system gap and whether or not the sidewalk has a failing level of service. So we have 25 points that we're asking the council to scatter across those broad eight categories that will be multiplied by the base points to give a total possible score. So my goal here tonight is to figure out how to get the council to say which ones are the high priorities and which ones are the low priorities, and help me try to figure out how I'm going to place these 25 weighting points. So I think the easiest way to, to walk through it really quickly is, when we go through the criteria, is it a high priority or a low priority? Then we can kind of figure out how we're going to apply the points once we've kind of separated those into those broad categories. Does that help? So I can answer any questions before we start.
I think I saw Councilmember McLehman's freak out. The deputy mayor Swatman? Go ahead.
Well, my question was, is this a required element of the comprehensive plan?
It is not a required element to have a prioritization matrix. We do it so that we can prioritize the vast need of pedestrian improvements in a way that is equitable and fair across the city.
Deputy Mayor Swatman?
Thank you. So we've had one of these before, right? We've had a previous one, iteration of this. I think staff did a great job previously identifying, you know, the matrix and everything, going through that before. So are these the same type of numbers that we used on that previous one? Because I know we weren't too terribly successful in doing a lot of the priorities before.
We've done a couple of things. One, we've cleaned up the category, so they're more yes-or-no questions, so they're easier to score. And two, instead of applying a council weighting factor for each of the sub-elements, we're just going to apply one main weighting factor to the whole category. So you'll see, that's why your box is all white, instead of having the lines through it, because there's just going to be one weighting factor. And so, for example, if you said public road classification is a high priority that we use as, we use the road classification as a high priority to council, say we put five points in there, we would multiply five against each one of those point values so that the highest score would be 20, 15, and 5.
Okay. Councilmember Baldwin?
The only part, I guess, I didn't really understand about the, the process here is you're saying 25 total points from the whole council, and we're giving portions of that, or?
Yeah, so when we add up all the weighting points, it just needs to equal 25, so...
Okay, so like, we'll all decide like, yes, a point, yes, a point, over and over, until there's 25?
No, no, we're going to start with, is it high or low? And if everything, if it's low, I'm going to say just do it as a 1 or a 2.
Okay.
If it's high, it's a 3 through a 6. So we're going to, I'm going to try to speed it along versus doing, we have eight categories and 25 points. It's set up so you can't just say 5 to everything.
Right.
That was intentional.
Okay.
That there has to be some differentiation. And we just, I talked with the mayor today, and we figured if we just start with, is it a high priority or is it a low priority? And then when the ones that are low, we'll talk about later, but we'll just focus on the ones that are high.
I'm sorry, I have one, oh, sorry.
So I hate to do this.
You're going to get all Matthew on us, aren't you?
No, I'm not. I don't get Matthew. Well, yeah, I am, we're going to, so sometimes, sometimes less is more. Is it possible just to not put this in the comprehensive plan update? And let council decide what the priorities for sidewalks is in the CDC meeting?
That is always, that is the council's priority. The planning commission recommended we use this, but that is the council's priority, just to completely remove it from the account, the agenda, the packet.
Councilmember Hubler?
Is there any benefit for us as a city to have it in the comprehensive plan?
Well, I think having the matrix allows us to do it very, it's a, I say, less of a, I'm picking this project versus letting a scoring system pick what the highest priority is, versus kind of hand-selecting projects. It, it takes it out of, out of that, oh, that's my project, that's your project, versus, and this just has a kind of a, we have all the sidewalks, if we run them through this matrix, and the ones that pop the top, pop the top.
Councilmember Baldwin?
I do think that this would be useful. It seems like fairly straightforward, what you're asking us to do as far as the point system is concerned. And I do think if it's in the comprehensive plan, then we won't just rinky-dinky, put stuff together and tape it all together. I think there'd be some level of direction, but CDC could accomplish the same thing, so I would agree also.
Councilmember Rock?
My personal opinion is, what if we complete it and have it on the record, but we don't submit it as part of the comprehensive plan? Maybe that's the first vote that we take before we complete it.
I would recommend having it in the comp plan because when, what we, what we also use this for is when neighbors, when citizens call and say, why isn't my sidewalk on there? We have an objective process we went through to identify where we're going to put in sidewalks. That's, that's what it also helps with, is when you get calls like, why aren't, why aren't we doing sidewalks? I saw you building sidewalks over here, why am I not building sidewalks over here? We have this objective criteria that we use to select the projects. So that's, I guess that's the goal and the recommendation.
Yes, yes, you can look at the paper as you get a phone call and say, well, actually, the council had decided a priority list that is actually, keeps my hands tied. I see. Well played.
Yet our city engineer has something to add as well.
We've had, we had one done all previously, right, though? Again, with all, you know, because to me, it's like, oh, the planning agency's already done the hard work, you know, the numbers are there, I'm all good with it, you know, let the CDC go through with the matrix kind of thing, because there's always those extra factors that are going to lay on top of the weighting.
And the council doesn't have to add a weighting factor.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, that's what I was wondering if you could do, like, just one. One for all of them type of thing would be one thing that I would think of. Because again, you know, we had one done before with the weighting factors on it, which is great, and I love that idea to do that. The CDC gets that type of, you know, information. They can do something, you know, if they wanted to tweak things, because we'll always get those grant opportunities and other things that come up where it's kind of like, oh, you know, we're doing this sewer work or water work or whatever, or road work or whatever, so this sidewalk project, even though it's number five, is going to all of a sudden be number one, you know?
Deputy Mayor Swatman, I completely agree. There's never no, a perfect system. You may have a project that's lower the priority, but it's tied with something that we can go grant.
Exactly, but at least we have a list that we have.
We have a list to begin that, yeah.
You know, kind of the ones that we're looking at doing at some point. Okay?
And you had a, yeah, go ahead.
As the city engineer trying to trace down funding for some of this stuff, I recommend that you put it in your comp plan.
Yeah.
You know, TIB, they want to know how you selected it. It wasn't just that I came up with it, but a comprehensive look from our electeds that live here selected it. Safe arcs to school, that's another funding source for this. Yeah, you got a school, yeah, completing a gap, but it went through a comprehensive process again. It's, it allows you to score higher than your municipal peers for the same amount of money.
I'm still just kind of wondering why we didn't do all the projects that we had on the list before, right? We had them out there, we had them listed, we had some of them. Well, and actually, I think you are kind of doing one of them now from 214th in front of the one housing development over there.
I heard you say that we'd done, done it before. I'd like to commend Assistant City Engineer Fonda for completing the sidewalk on Angeline Road last year. Every time I drive up in the morning, when school buses are getting ready to pick up kids, that sidewalk is loaded with kids.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? The one that passed went to the CDC's last night on Killer Lake Road between 210th and 212th.
There you go.
When you drive by that and the school bus is already picked up, the parents are lined up in their cars on those side roads, waiting to pick up their kids. So the sidewalks have been built in Bonnie Lake in the last two years, and they'll continue to be built, but they won't if you don't prioritize them, and you won't if you don't chase funding.
Yeah, but we did prioritize them, you know? And we did fund them.
So it sounds like we need to continue doing that.
The question before the council, and you really have two options. One, there's not a requirement for weighting. That, that was something that we have always done to allow the council to have kind of an additional oversight on how we prioritize projects. The council could choose, we don't want to do the weighting factor and just use the base point value, and then you could provide any comments on the base point value if you want us to tweak those. So that's also a completely doable option as well. We just wanted to make sure that we're respectful of how the council wants us to prioritize these sidewalk improvement projects because everyone wants sidewalks, and we're just trying to find a way of equitably identifying the projects[1709.08] trying to find a way of equitably identifying the projects that we, that will be, that we'll be chasing grant funds and spending city resources on.
Councilor Baldwin.
One of the, the things I didn't really understand is the sidewalk level of service.
So, we are...
What does that mean? I read it, but I don't understand.
So, we're required to establish what we call sidewalk level of service, and it's based on a number of factors. How wide the sidewalk is, what the adjacent speed limit is, how wide the, if there's a buffer or not a buffer, is there a sidewalk, is there not a sidewalk? And is there ADA compliant issues? And they kind of get ranked on, we use a simple scale, green, yellow, and red. Yellow is our adopted level of service standard. So, if you're in the yellow, then you're meeting the minimum standard. If you're green, you're exceeding it. If you're red, you're failing it. Not all streets necessarily will have a failing sidewalk LOS, even if they don't have a sidewalk, because they're a low-volume road, they don't have a lot of traffic. So, if you think of a cul-de-sac with six houses on it, if they don't have a sidewalk, that doesn't necessarily mean it's failing, because the, the road volume is so low, and there's a paved shoulder, there's a gravel shoulder, that meets, that could meet that minimum standard when you take account all those, all those factors. So, this is, this is getting at, it's the, these are, they're the areas where, when you take a look at the, the condition of the sidewalk, or lack thereof, that you're getting to a point where it's scoring really, really low, and it's in that, in that category of failing, because either there isn't sidewalk. So, just classic example, East Town, high-volume road, you know, high-volume road, 45 mile an hour speed limit or 40 mile an hour speed limit, depending on which section you're in, no sidewalk is going to come up as a failed level of service because of the, all those different, those different analysis. So, that would be an area that would score higher in like a 5 unit cul-de-sac.
As failing.
As failing.
Okay.
Anyone else? So, I guess, do we want to use the weighting? I guess the first question is, do you want to use the weighting factor or not?
Sure.
I do.
Yes.
Some head nods, I'm thinking it's a yes.
Okay, so then the second one is, it's a quick thumbs up, thumbs down on whether it's a high priority or a low priority, and we'll try to do this as quick as we can. So, when we're talking about what we do for the public road classification, is it a high priority to the city council that we're looking at the classification of the road to determine if it's a priority for sidewalks?
No.
Low, okay.
Well, that's, I'm just one.
Although, I saw thumbs down. I was reading thumbs down and...
Oh, you were doing thumbs down. Really, I guessed right, didn't look.
So, whether or not it's, it's compliant with the American Disabilities Act. And so, we've already gone through and looked, did a study. Councilmember McLeibman has joked it's the thousand-year plan. The ADA transition plan that we adopted a couple of years ago.
Is that not a fact?
It is. Literally written in the document.
It's written in our code.
Yeah, it's the ADA transition plan, and it's already identified all the sidewalks in areas where we're not meeting ADA compliance, and it identified high and low priorities. So, that's already been done. It's just, how does the council feel using our ADA transition plan and failed ADA compliance as a high priority or a low priority in determining where we place sidewalks?
No.
Okay.
Low.
Low. Existing crashes.
Good luck.
Parts and trailheads, the vicinity. Oh, I'm getting mixed.
I'll do, gotta do it plus.
Midland's High, too? Okay, so we'll say that.
I saw four yeses.
Local centers, and what this means is, is it within what we call one of our local centers, which is, who is it, in downtown, midtown, or East Town?
Like, by the shopping centers?
Well, no. East Town is all the property basically between 214th and 233rd. Midtown is basically from South Prairie Road to Sumner Buckley Highway, 214th to Angeline, or 192nd, and then downtown is that downtown core area.
You have a question?
I have a question. Before we vote on that, can you, since you've clarified what a local center is, can you please clarify what a public service facility is? Because I would think that those are within the local centers, but more specific narrowing of an area.
Sometimes, but we, but public facilities also include...
Schools.
Schools. And schools are located throughout the city, so the, the schools, schools, medical facilities, libraries, yes, a lot of them are located in the downtown center. Our facility is a public facility, so those are the ones that would be considered public facilities.
Thank you.
So, it's sounding like local center is...
Still voting on local center?
Low.
Looks low, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
A public service facility, and that's defined as high. And then fills a system gap, high, and then a failed level of service.
Failed level of service is like if it, it's like a fast highway and there's no road that'd score high, right?
That could be an example, or...
It has issues right there.
It has issues.
Okay, yeah.
I'm confused about that one. I don't think that's...
I think, I mean, the only, only two of us.
Go ahead and spend the money. It's me on 3, there you go. Mayor gets the vote.
So, what do you want, I'll put it as a medium.
There you go.
I need a little bit more clarification of level of service.
So, a level of service, and I wish I would have brought the document, it's, we, we run an analysis on our existing street network.
Okay.
Every single street. And we're looking at, what's the width of the sidewalk? What is the treatment between the sidewalk and the roadway? What is the volume of the roadway? Are there ADA compliance issues with that road, with that roadway? And then it's run through a GIS analysis, and it pops a score. And if it scores green, so, and if there's sidewalks, or, and how many, where are the sidewalks located? So, if there's sidewalks on both sides of the road, that's considered green, it's exceeding the standard. If there's sidewalk on one side of the road, that's yellow, it's meeting the standard. If there's no sidewalk, it's failing, so that's one category.
Councilor Baldwin.
So, as a hypothetical, I, I don't even know what direction to point, but it's basically where you're coming around the bend and you're next to the Kelly Farm, like, property, right? That weird road, is, would that be a place where it'd probably be failing?
Yes, that would probably be one that is failing.
Yeah, I just, I, I, you know, I guess I want to just say to the council, like, I feel like with the sidewalk level of service, the ones that are failing, like, these are the areas that are actually being identified through a matrix where you can see, like, this is a, this could be a, a potential hazard for people and, and probably needs a sidewalk.
That, that's a misnomer in, in my mind, because if I go to Lake Cedar View, that, they're all red in there, because there's like no sidewalk on any side of the street, but that is a safe neighborhood to walk in.
But does it have high traffic?
No.
But that's what he's saying, is that, that's a part of how they score it. And so, if, let's pretend it was that, and then all of a sudden it has very high traffic volume, then even though it's a safe neighborhood, was, and then there's, but there's no sidewalks, that does become more risky to them people. Right? I mean, this, I don't think that's a good, that's not an apple-to-apple comparison, because, you know, you're saying that it's, there's not high traffic volume there.
So, one example would be like Locust Avenue or Bonnie Lake Boulevard. That one usually scores yellow, because we have a complete sidewalk on one side of the road, right? So, that's not somewhere, area where you'd want to add sidewalk, because, yes, it'd be great to have sidewalks on both sides, but we do have sidewalk on one side. You could have situations where you're having that, no sidewalks, and it's still not failing because the volume is so low that you're not needing those, those pedestrian improvements, because you can actually walk on a gravelled shoulder or something like that. And we're caught, we're running that analysis right now through, through the GIS system to take all those data points. So, Cedar View may come up as failing, because it, when it, because it doesn't score high enough, it might not score just right. But that's why we just use it as 1, so we're not using failing level of service as the only criteria, because every, you'd have much more failing, we're just using it as one point. So, if this council wants to score it high or low, I, I'm fine with that. It's, it's just one more data point that we're looking at.
Councilor Hubler.
So, take a section on like Church Lake Road. There's not much for sidewalks, but there's little intermittent pieces. So, would that be considered part of the sidewalk level of service and filling in the gaps kind of thing, right? Okay, so if we prioritize, like, we want to fill in the gaps, that's also part of our sidewalk level of service, because it allows us to get to the park, Town York Park from there.
This is a great example. It would start to score high on this prioritization matrix, because it's within walking distance of the park. It's filling a system gap. Church Lake Road is identified as one of the future routes for the Fennel Creek Trail. It's, it possibly, but might have a failing level of service. So, because it's, it's hitting multiple points, it's going to raise that its priority up the matrix. You don't just get one point, you don't just get one criteria. The sidewalk is scored against all of these criterias, and the ones that are meeting more of the criteria are going to score higher, and that's where we're going to prioritize our...
Councilor McLeibman.
So, in the weighting there, is, does council want to consider where we have to move utilities in order to build the sidewalk? So, there is a code that says, if we build the sidewalk, we have to move utilities or underground them, right? So, it can take an in or an amount of city funds to build sidewalks in certain locations where we can consider other locations. Is that something we want to, responsibility rests on CDC committee to ferret that out, or do we want to add that into the scale?
There's a couple of ways that council could tackle that. If we require a utility to move a sidewalk, or sorry, move an electrical utility and we keep it above ground, and I'm looking at the city engineer to make sure I'm saying this correctly, that is on the utility. We don't have to pay for that relocation. So, if we, if there's a sidewalk that we're putting through, and their pole is in our way, and we say, you need to move your pole, so we have to put in our sidewalk, that is completely at the cost of the utilities. We don't have to pay for that relocation. If we are saying, hey, you want to under, we need you to under, we want you to underground that utility when you move it, we pay the delta between the cost to relocate the pole and set the pole and run the utilities, and the cost to underground. And I'm getting the thumbs up from the city engineer, so I explained it right. So, the council could ask us to bring back code provisions that basically says, when we're doing sidewalk improvement projects, or sidewalk improvements, that undergrounding is not a required component, only the relocation.
So, that would be a change to existing code? Because existing code says we have to underground it.
Yeah, when we do development, we have to underground.
Yeah, you might have to look at that a little bit.
When we do development, or when we put it, is the sidewalk considered to be a... I think it's just when we do development, not when we do sidewalk projects. And, you know? I'm trying to do code from memory, and that's all.
The undergrounding of your utility is where you want to be, but there may be cases you don't want to do it, right?
Sure.
The question was, is when do you have to underground?
Right.
And typically, you've got to underground if you have, there's no way that you can move the pole, right? You got to go buy somebody's property to put the pole over, buy an easement. That'd be one reason why you'd have to underground. So, but there are lots of areas where the sidewalk goes around the pole, or things like that. So, I, while this is a valid concern and important for discussion, I think there's engineering solutions that I've done in my career that allows you to make that not a, you can either make it part of the project and make your project more expensive, as you discussed, or you can not do it and make, keep, keep it overhead, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I was under the impression that Bonnie Lake City Code required us to underground utility, put in a sidewalk.
When we are doing development. So, if we're doing, if you're, if you're building a new building, and as part of your building, you're doing sidewalk, then you're undergrounding the utilities. It's not the sidewalk that's causing the requirement to underground the utilities, it's the development on the property. So, when we did... Yeah, so when we did...
Along Lake Tap, along Lake Tap Drive, that new apartment complex down there, they undergrounded all the utilities there.
Because they were doing, they were doing commercial development.
On the corner? Is that my favorite one?
Your favorite one was the pole?
Yeah.
Where we missed, there was one pole.
It's still there, isn't it?
Uh-huh. Yeah, we're, we're...
I thought so.
Yeah.
I run by it all the time.
But like, when we did, when we did Allen York Park, Phil 5, we had to underground the utilities, because we were doing development in the park, which was also when doing the frontage improvements. So, that's when the undergrounding gets kind of required by the code. It's not the sidewalk, it's the, the act of doing the development. A sidewalk project by itself would not, from what I remember of the code, would not necessitate undergrounding the utilities. May require relocation, but that's not at our expense.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilor Hubler.
I guess, just kind of listening to all this back and forth, I'm thinking about the sidewalk level of service. My opinion would be that we make that a, a high priority if it goes along with one of the other high priorities. So, like, if we're filling a gap, that would be a high priority, or if we're going to connect a section of sidewalk for a public service facility, that would be a high priority in the level of service. That's what I think. But it would have to almost, my thought is like it coincides with another piece.
Councilor Rock.
We're rating all of these, so if we just rate it right in the middle.
That's kind of what I was saying, is if, what I was going to recommend is you put that one at a, kind of at a, at a 3. And then we've got 1, 2, 2, 3, 4 high priorities. And if you did that at, at 4, at, at 4 or 5, I can make the math work to get to 25, where, and the low priorities will be 1 or 2s.
That makes sense.
Just to make it work out to 25.
Deputy Mayor Swoblaw.
Thank you. So, do we have funding in 2025 for any sidewalk projects?
Yes, the, if you look at the budget document that you just approved, there are two sidewalk projects that we are doing in 2025 that were part of the last prioritization. I'm just going to get to that page real quick.
So, none of these are a possibility for 2025, is what you're saying?
They would be 2026.
Okay.
26 projects, because we're going to be doing the analysis in 2025.
Councilor McLeibman.
I just want to just remind you that a negative number is still a number. In case, in case of like, local centers and, yeah.
Right, there you go.
When you're trying to get to 25.
We would just put that, I, I, I can see, I can read the council, we would just put that as a 1, it's no weighting, basically.
Councilor Baldwin.
You know, a little side comment, but with all this talk about power lines and code and sidewalks and roads, I was recently in Costa Rica, and I just have a, just, just appreciate you guys and all the thought you put into making sure that, you know, the city doesn't look chaotic and patched together.
Right, isn't that amazing?
It's crazy. Roadways were absolutely terrifying to drive on.
So, here, here's my proposal. I quit, did some quick math. If you take the four highs, there's 1, 2, 3, 4 of them, and you each give them 5 points, those are your, because those were unanimously high, that gets you to 20. For all the lows, which are three of them, road classification, Americans with Disabilities Act, and the local centers, and you do 1, that gets you to 23. Failed LOS gets you to, and you do 2 at failed LOS, you're at 25.
That's great. Thank you.
Nice job.
And that's what we'll bring, we'll update that and put it in the packet for next week for the motion.
Perfect.
Deputy Mayor, there's C, and just so you know, on page 42 of the packet, under Street CIP, that's where he had, they have budgeted for sidewalks.
Yeah, and they've already spent it, though, so this is 26, so I'm like, okay, yeah, whatever.
Is that for consent next week?
I think so. All right, our next item, please, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 24130, motion M 24130, for discussion only on designating the official city representative and alternate to the South Sound 911 Board of Directors. I just received an email saying that we have to fill a position on the South Sound 911 Board of Directors for 2025 through 2027, for the board and for the alternate. It must be an elected official. So, I just need to have two names so I can put the motion together for next week. The meetings are monthly in Tacoma, the third Wednesday of each month, and it's at 9:00 a.m.
Well, I'm out.
The, so the, the primary is what, a staff member, so?
No, it has to be an elected official.
Okay. This was what, what Councilor McLeibman did prior, previously. Okay.
Do you want to do it again?
It does say, or alternately, a chief executive officer, chief law enforcement It does say, or alternately, a chief executive officer, chief law enforcement officer, fire chief, or a person directly reporting to such.
So chief.
Councilmember Hubler.
I would be okay with doing that. I can make my Wednesday once a month, if nobody else wants to do it. Kelly, if you've done it before and you want to do it, I can be your alternate as well.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't know, because it's, it's kind of a different position, right? And.
You tell.
We have to just, well, so.
Yeah, maybe.
So the thing is that you're, you're, that the board is heavily weighted towards Tacoma and Puyallup, right? And so I was constantly reminding them that small jurisdictions like Bonnie Lake, Greenwater, Ording, what's the other one out there?
Buckley.
Capousen. Yeah, yeah, Carbonado. You know, there's a lot of, you know, there's a, there's trouble, right? And then the other real problem that I think our law enforcement have, and correct me if we still don't have it, is that the radio systems don't make sense, right? And they don't want to fix the radio system. Right? Doesn't make sense for me that 911, they want all of the money, but they don't want to fix the radio system, because they gotta go fight with Tacoma Radio, Tacoma Fire, because they're really the ones that own the radio system, to fix it, so that we're on, on the same band with our neighbors, so that as somebody is speeding through Sumner, right, that our guys hear what's going on. Is, is, am I getting that right?
Not exactly.
Okay.
We are trying to move towards a single-source radio system, where all the radio systems, Tacoma's, Pierce County DMs, and then the, the larger cities will be on one. But we can speak to Sumner, Pierce County right now, there are some things we're trying to fix, but the interoperability between both law enforcement and fire in the region have really come along. South Sound 911's actually doing a pretty good job with that.
Are they? And when, when did that occur?
Oh, it's probably been in the last three years.
Okay, all right. All right.
And I will say, as much as I appreciate the offer, I may have a conflict of interest, because I'm already a voting member on the South Sound 911 Public Safety Communications Operations Committee. I don't know that I can be on two of their radio committees.
So, Councilmember Hubler, if you want to be on it, it is, it is, there's a, there's a lot to learn, it's probably very good to be on, on the Public Safety Committee. So I would encourage that, and I could be your, I'd be glad to be your alternate, and we can talk about.
Okay.
Kind of what I've experienced, right? And the, the, South Sound 911 is, they're, they're an amazing organization, I didn't mean to, I wasn't trying to disparage them, because it's, the radio problem, when I was on the board, was a hard problem, because there was different entities that, and the history of how things got there was difficult.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I'd be cool with doing it.
I'll fill out the paperwork and get you what you need, and I will have it on the consent for next week for approval.
Good, thank you. So it's going to consent, yeah, so we have no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.